Good evening, we welcome you here to the ready to be West Valley City Council. We call for all 83 members of the council to have all kinds of their statements. With that, we will turn to Councilmember Steve Vincent for the opening ceremony.
Thank you Mayor. As you can see, we have a group of students here from the American Preparatory Academy. They come from the two different campuses here in West Valley and we're so grateful to have them here. They are going to perform the National Anthem and then following the National Anthem, we would like to do the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'll turn it over to them.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. It's a lot to our meeting.
With that then, we'll go to the approval of our minutes of August 15th. To the council for a motion on the minutes.
Move for approval of the August 15th minutes.
Second.
Properly before us, any further discussions? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes unanimously, the minutes are approved. Next, we go to a proclamation declaring August 26th as Lights On After School Day in West Valley City in support of American Preparatory Academy's after-school programs. And I will take a moment to read that proclamation. Whereas, "High-quality after-school programs not only keep young people healthy and safe, but help foster meaningful relationships, inspire learning and career pathways, promote civic engagement and community service, provide worthwhile and challenging activities, develop talents and strengths, and increase overall success in school life. Whereas research indicates high-quality after-school programs that provide expanded learning opportunities for young people outside the school day helps to improve academic achievement, increase attendance, and social behavior and support working families. And whereas in Utah, 17 percent of K-12 youth are responsible for taking care of themselves after school, whereas all Utah children, not currently enrolled in after-school, children of them, 47 percent would be likely to participate if an after-school program were available in their community. Whereas 92 percent of parents are satisfied with the after-school program their child attends, whereas 73 percent of after-school programs are located in a public school building. Whereas 10 percent of Utah's K-12 children participate in after-school programs, including 7,192 kids in programs supported by the U.S. Department of Education's 21st Century Community Learning Centers Initiative, the only federal program dedicated to after-school. And whereas American Preparatory Academy has an average of 550 students attending after-school programs each day in 36 different after-school programs, including 11 study hall sessions each day, kindergarten through 12th grade, including SPED tutoring, Systema Utah music programs, which include all percussion, string, wind, and brass instruments, as well as voice training and music theory, robotics, coding club, app camp, geography club, Euro club, Shakespeare, green car club, politics club, drum line, jazz bank, poetry, adult English classes, science club, and math club. And whereas Lights On After School is a celebration of after-school programs promoting the critical importance of quality programs for youth by ensuring lights stay on and doors remain open for all youth during the out-of-school time hours, now therefore we, Mayor Ron Bigelow and the City Council of West Valley City, do hereby declare August 26, 2017 as Lights On After School Day in West Valley City." Thank you. That is the proclamation that will be signed later this evening. And we'll move on with that, yes. Typically, we don't have a lot of clapping in here, except for such great programs as American Preparatory Academy's anthem that they play for us. With that now, we will go to our public comment period. Councilman Vincent, had you arranged with them how long they would stay?
No, they're free to go home with their families.
Traditionally, you are welcome to stay, all of you who are here for that. We will be going now to our public comment and then items of work on our agenda. And it is not unusual for some to leave. If you feel so inclined, you can do that, whatever you determine as a group. Next, we go to our public comment period. We have several people who have signed up to speak tonight. We remind you that a maximum of five minutes per person, one person or one individual speaks one time, that's it. We also mentioned that it is not a debate time or question and answer with the council, it's the opportunity for a resident of West Valley or someone to speak and share their thoughts. With that, we'll begin with Kelly Burtok. Oh, yes, and by the way, if you're here to discuss the Hunter Town Center hearing, we will have a separate public comment hearing on that, okay?
Thank you.
And just as I call your name, if you happen to be there for that, just let me know and then we'll come back to it. Please proceed.
Pleasure to be back again. I missed last meeting a few weeks ago. But I'm here again still to just talk about spot zoning. It's not a good idea how you guys approve of spot zoning in communities without the people's knowledge around them. It's not good. Even though you guys said, letters were sent, I give you a list of names of people that did not receive a dump. So I'm against your spot zoning. The way you approve, you do these things is wrong, especially when you have written letters from people stating, "We don't want this." And yet you let one person come in here and you give it to her. But also, unfortunately, our district leader here is not here because this regulates on her because I don't feel she's doing her job as a citizen. She is not doing a job for our community. You guys have ordinances about weed control. Now, let's talk about weed control and let's talk about Mountain View Corridor. What you guys have created in our community is a disaster itself. You took out a whole bunch of homes and yet you left us all ground and there's weeds everywhere. If you look on 35th South, just north of that park, on 35th and between 56 and 6,000 West, it's hideous, under the power lines, it's hideous. You have weeds this tall. Your ordinance people don't look at this stuff, but we drive by it every day. What's that saying to the west side part of our community? It's looking to me as a citizen, you guys are looking at right here at the center of taking care of it and you're forgetting the east-west sides of it. We're all part of this community. See, I'm a proud member and living in Hunter and that's what I call it, Hunter. I don't recognize West Valley City because you guys don't look at us out west. Another thing, parking on streets. How many cars are you going to allow to park on a public street for a residential? I've got eight cars per some of my family members next door to me in four homes. I can promise you, on any given day when these cars were parked side by side, your fire trucks would not make it down there, endangering us. Please get your ordinance people looking at that and I'm not saying one time a day, check it periodically, different times. Traffic light, why haven't you put one on 35th and 6,000 West? You've got one on 5,200 West, it goes just between 35th and 41. 6,000 goes from 35th all the way up. And I can guarantee you, there's a lot more traffic there, plus you've got at least three schools on this street access. You've got many churches on this access, it's a heavily traffic area. And we'd like to see something done there. Also, your street lighting, I seen your people come by and repair some lights and within two days, it's already burnt back out. I'd like to see these guys come back around and do their job. And what you guys were trying to do on 6,000 or 56 and 35th, I'm not sure yet, I guess we'll learn it. But again, look at us as a committee or the community that lives around it. We're the ones in effect. Make sure that we're included in this. I know that the voting made a little bit of change here to kind of wake up a few people. We're speaking up. And again, you guys work under the direction of this gentleman right here. I know that you're here to represent, but all call comes down to you, Mr. Paul. Please step up, make these guys accountable for their actions. We as a community need some support and help. Our district is not giving it to us. We ask that you call these guys accountability and make all of them accountable for their actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kevin Anderson. Okay, thank you. Bob Jones?
Hi, I'm just here for a hearing.
On the Hunter Town Center?
No. S-8217, 207, 2017, application number.
So Mayor, one of the new business items, it's not a public hearing.
It's not a, yeah, so there will be no public hearing on that particular item.
So if you wanted to make comment now, maybe at times.
You, but you are welcome to comment now.
Staff's having a great time. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Then Vicki Samuelson.
Oh, I think I saw the wrong list. I thought it was just a guest list, I'm so sorry.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm just like, oh no, I don't have anything to say.
Alex Winder?
I'm here for Hunter Town Center.
Hunter Town Center. Leroy?
Righter. Gibson?
Gibson, oh, okay. Please.
I live in Copper New Motorhome Park and there's a big animal problem over there. I've discussed it with the mayor and your director over animal control. I have been over there five times and he has not returned my calls. And tonight, I was over there and talked to the lady in the front and she said, "The reason he has not returned my calls is because it's a mobile home park." Now, because we're local home citizens of West Valley City, does that make us second-class You know, I think he should have, the director over there, should have enough common courtesy to return the call to the public. I've discussed it with the mayor, but he still don't want to do it. All he had to do is call me and tell me, instead of having waited at home, call and tell me, "Sir, that is a mobile home park, you'll have to take other steps." But he didn't have enough courtesy to give me a phone call. You know, and I don't think it's right. If some little kid gets bit and injured for life because it's a mobile home park, yet it's in West Valley City boundaries, does that make, because it's a mobile home park, does that make that little kid's scars go away? No. So I think animal control does have some responsibility, you know, to every citizen in West Valley City, no matter if they live in a mobile home park, if they live in a, whatever they live in, they do have some responsibility to take care of the animals. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, next we have Sue Vinstra.
Thank you, Ron, Mayor Bigelow, for your time. And we just want to let you know how much we appreciate West Valley City Councilman, Mayor Bigelow, for supporting after-school. This year is like a critical year because a lot of our after-school funding and the grants are going to be cut and we need your support. We need, yeah, a lot of support for our kids. Currently, we've been doing a lot of registration for our kids. We start our programs this Saturday with Registering at Lights On. So far, 250 students have signed up for Awesome at Systema Utah program. And so we would love to continue this K-12 program for all of our students at any age. So part of our things, we'd like to present to you a banner to West Valley City telling you, "Thank you for keeping our lights on." And so, whatever requests, our students have been here at West Valley City Hall for the first time. So if you have time, we would love to have a picture with all of you and just say thank you for everything that you do.
That will be perfectly fine. Okay. So you want to do that in here? Okay. So if you'd like to do that right now? I'm sorry, I missed what you said, so... Do you want to wait here till after our meetings? That's going to be a little while. No, let's do it now. So please come up here and if you'll come in this central area, right here in front of the council, you'll gather everyone together. And Jake, if you'll assist a little bit there. Are the teachers coming in to picture? Let's get the teachers in here, that's covered. Let's take the teachers and take them up behind the guy. Otherwise, you're not going to appear. Yeah, back there behind you guys or next to the council, there's too many of you. So back up a little bit more. Back up a little more. Are we going to go that way to get there? So we can stand a bit?
This is something you don't see in Los Angeles. I'm just sitting here and watching.
If you can't see them, they can't see you.
Yeah, there's nothing to say tonight. They won't answer.
So the young man behind, the beautiful young lady with the red, yeah, the councilman. Yeah, go all the way this way, please, by the teacher. Little bit more, little bit more, little bit more. And the young lady, right there. You guys, go that way a little bit more again. Go that way a little bit more, that way a little bit more. Here we go. So everybody take half a step to your left. That's great, right there. And please stay there until our photographer takes a picture.
With my fancy camera.
Sorry. Okay. One, two, three. Is there anybody else in here who wants to take a picture? Family, friends? Thank you very much. All right. That was quite an event. Now, we're still in our public comment period. Is there anyone else here who wanted to just speak in general terms, not on the Hunter Town Center? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city manager, any comments?
Yes, thanks Mayor. I think I probably ought to make just a couple of comments, which I normally don't do. And as you mentioned earlier, when we have folks speak in public comment, it's not a reply or a, so I'm not going to be addressing any specific issue that was brought up tonight. But I did think that this might be actually a pretty good opportunity for a little bit of just re-iteration, a little clarification of a couple of points that were made up general to the city operations. So one, thought it might be well to point out that in our former government, brief explanation might be had in that you, the elected body of the council, are indeed responsible for and formulate policy, which I, as the city manager and your hired professional in that capacity, have the task of implementing. You certainly don't report to me, I report to you. And sometimes it is a misconception of how our municipal government here in West Valley City works. But it's an important point, it's a valuable point. It's a working relationship that I think has served West Valley City very well for a number of decades now, was chosen early on in the city's history by the people's vote. And so I just wanted to make sure that that was clear for anybody who might be sitting in the audience or watching on TV or viewing this meeting later, that it's important to understand that, where our roles are and where my role is specifically. Second point I wanted to make, most generally for the public, had to do with the question about animal control and their responsibilities. You might, or one might get the impression that the city is not willing to or ready to serve citizens that happen to live in a mobile home park for the sake that they live in a mobile home park. I just wanted to make sure that clarification or that consideration or that position was not held either. The problem that we have or the disagreement that we have in terms of satisfaction of the one gentleman has to do with jurisdiction of the property, not our willingness or desire to serve in that area. So I thought I would make that point as well. Mayor, that's it, that's all we got.
To the council, comments?
Just wanted, could you explain jurisdiction?
Yes, and if you want a longer explanation, I could have the department director come up and do that. But basically, the situation is you've got a mobile home park, which is a private property made up of a number of single-family residences, is privately owned by a management company and our abilities in those organizations is limited more so than it would be at a single-family residence, for example, or someplace where often we can observe violations from public property, a street, a park, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
I want to make a comment in regards to the Mountain View Corridor and potential code violations that are in that area. Number one, wasn't our project, we did not take the homes, the state took the homes. Number two, it is a state highway, so they're responsible for the property, not the city. And so, yes, would we like that cleaned up? Absolutely. I would suggest, and I think we constantly talk to UDOT about taking care of their property and it goes unheard and so I think the calls need to be made to UDOT because they're the ones that are responsible for that piece of property.
Thank you very much. Looks like that's all of the comments, so we'll go to the next items on our agenda. And yes, now's the time to start putting the screens down. Okay? Because we're going to go to these public hearings on the Hunter Town Center. But as an introduction to that, there are three here. Application GP1, 2017, ZT2, 2017, and Z6, 2017. These are all related, so we're going to have an introduction on them. And Mr. Pastrick going to do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So if you'll come up and do a summary introduction of that, because this is a more complex issue. And if you'll make sure you clarify which each one is, but while you're there, we're going to go through all three.
Sure, happy to do that, Mayor. So as you pointed out, there are three items for the council's consideration, there are three separate ordinances. The first, GP1, 2017, that is a proposed amendment to the city's general plan. And specifically, it's an update to the city's Hunter Town Center plan. So back in 2010, the city adopted a plan for the area surrounding the intersection of 35th South and 5600 West. And so this first action, an update And so this first action would update that plan that's part of the city's larger general plan. So that's the first item. The second item actually creates a new zone that's referred to as the Hunter Town Center Zone. And so it's essentially amending the zoning ordinance of the city to create this new zone. And then finally, the third action is an actual re-zone of property, and again, properties surrounding that, the intersection of 35th South and 5600 West, to this new Hunter Town Center Zone. So those are the three actions. And I'm happy to go over any maps that you'd like if you have specific questions. But that's a summary of the three items.
Anything else the council would like clarified with those? Okay, maybe it would be well to, for the benefit of those who are here, to show the maps in conjunction with that, so let's...
So Mayor, yeah, we're trying to show those. Apparently, we're having a little connection problem between projector and the computers. I don't know how long that's going to take to resolve. You can wait a minute or two, that'll be fine. But yeah, doing that's probably not going to give me any better way to estimate for you how long I will take.
You can do mine while you're waiting.
All the pre-teens have left. We're going to have trouble with the technology.
Surely, something will come together soon.
Would he give us the parameters on north, south, east, west of that?
We'll be having some further clarification on, once the maps are up, because I think we need that in place. Yeah. Right now, our... The public comment will come in a few minutes, and people can ask questions and clarify. You didn't happen to bring any pictures with you to pass around?
I could hold up my tablet here.
While we're waiting, anything else you'd like to add, just so that it's not just dead airtime?
Sure, sure. So in the plan, it's, in just summary, it's addressing land use or future land uses for that area. And so generally speaking, the northwest, northeast, and southwest corners are commercial office, again, generally, would be the designation there. And then on the southeast corner, you have commercial right on the corner and then residential that is shown in the... Most of the vacant property in that southeast corner. So that's, again, generally what's shown in the plan for future land uses. And then as far as the zoning's concerned, it... And I can pull up just a quick summary here. Some of the topics that are addressed in the zoning would be the uses that are allowed or not allowed in that zone. There are architectural requirements, requirements for the amount of landscaping or open space. There's building and parking setbacks, standards for building height, standards for any new streets or driveways that are built internal to the development, lighting and signage restrictions. And so, again, just to... In terms of the types of topics that are addressed in the zone, that's, again, an overview of the type of regulations that are addressed in the zoning.
Steve, can you kind of explain for everybody here what really a master plan is?
Sure.
And the fact that it's just that, so it's fine?
Right, so good distinction between you have the city's master plan, which is a guide or a future land use guide to help the council make future decisions. It's not law. It's... While it is adopted, it's not binding on the council. And so it's... There's quite a bit of research that goes into it, looking at projections of what's needed in the future. But it's meant to be a guide for making decisions like zoning that are binding, and it's actually our regulations that are imposed on property. And so that's why we have the plan first as a consideration, and then the zoning that follows is meant to be a tool to implement the plan.
And what does a master plan do to the current uses and the current residents?
So it... In terms of any current use, it doesn't really impact current uses. It does open up potential or opportunities for future uses of property. So for example, if someone, you know, has a home right now and the plan suggests commercial use there, someone that's in a situation like that can continue to use their home as a home indefinitely. It simply means that if there's interest in the future in doing commercial, that the city would be supportive of that change in use.
And that would only come as a result of the current landowner choosing that option?
That's correct.
I just wanted to make that distinction because so many times we have people come to think a master plan is going to make them change. And when I emphasize that, that's not what a master plan does.
That's right.
It doesn't make them change anything that they have.
That's correct.
We have progress.
Oh, that's good. Sorry, as you say, I don't tap answer at all. Command screen, blank screen.
Due to the timeframe, can you just tell us what the exact addresses are?
Thank you.
If they were straight lines, I think you could, and they're not straight lines.
I think everybody here is familiar exactly with the addresses. If you could just tell us approximately the homes and the businesses?
People have an opportunity shortly to have, you know, to ask questions.
I can attempt to just describe briefly, at least for the plan. So for the first item of the plan, in the northwest corner of that intersection, it's the property south of Walmart. So from the property just directly south of Walmart and down to 35th South, and from 5600 West over to where the Mountain View Corridor will be constructed. So that's that quadrant there. On the northeast corner, it's pretty much the commercial properties there on the east side of 5600 West. You have a few homes directly south of... Oh, there we are, where we're in business. So if we go to the second slide on that, so yes, the property highlighted in red would be the area impacted by the plan. Then if you wanted to look at the zoning, as far as the scope of the zoning, that would be... If we go, Jake, to the last attachment on the IMC. Yes. So that first slide there shows the scope of the zoning. And so there's an important... You notice there's a few distinctions here. So in the northwest corner, it's... The scope is the same in terms of the zoning and the general plan. In the southwest corner, the general plan did include some homes there in that southwest corner, but the zoning does not. It only captures the commercial properties. And then similarly, on the southeast corner, there's a property more on the south end there that's zoned agricultural, that's left out of the zone change. But then you have the property more approximate to the intersection that's included. And then on the northeast corner, it's, again, most of the same with the exception of that far east corner, properties that were not included, but that were... Or one property was included in the plan but not in the zoning. So those are the... That's the scope of these two items.
So Steve, what does it mean, then, to be... Have your property within a new Hunter Town Center Zone? The new zone?
So it just means that, for example, if your zone's C2 now, and then this new zone is proposed, then there's a new set of regulations. For example, a new list of permitted, conditional, and prohibited uses, for example, and other regulations when it comes to things like setbacks or height that would apply if this new zoning is put in place.
But would that require me to change my business or my building or my parking or my setbacks or anything with a going establishment?
For... No. So if someone has an existing business that's licensed, they would be able to continue that even if they do not comply with the new zoning.
So it's really looking into the future, for future uses, future owners, future businesses.
That's correct.
To create some differences in what would be there, potentially, if all of the property owners there decided to sell to somebody new, and the new person comes in and changes the form of the business or whatever.
Right, so exactly. In the case of redevelopment, the new standards would apply. Or, and this is more the exception, but where there are vacant properties, any new development of those vacant properties, the new standards would apply.
Say that I had McDonald's and Arby's wanted to buy my building, they could continue to operate it within the scope of the previous business, the McDonald's that I had.
That's correct.
I think the same would be if you had five or six acres of land that your family owned and currently have some horses and stuff on it, that it could remain that way as long as the family generations decided that's what they wanted to do, it would remain that way.
Correct.
Well, let's clarify that. In the case of the horses, what if they take the horses off for a while? For example, for more than a year?
Right.
Does that change it?
Right, so that... We start talking about non-conforming uses. So as long as the use that's legal continues, then they can continue indefinitely. But if there's a period of over a year where the use lapses, or there's a lapse in that use, then the new standards would apply.
Let's clarify that even further. Let's suppose that you have a property owner who is currently leasing out a business, and it's one of the, under the new zoning, non-conforming. But it's grandfathered in. That person may have tenants change over time. And as long as they're within the same business, we're okay. But when you say it's vacant for a year, what if it's vacant for eleven and a half months? And they agree with the tenant to come in, and the tenant says, "Great, I'll be in there in three months." Does it start when the document is signed? Does it start when occupancy occurs?
So we... What we look at is when, based on licensing, when the business... The previous business closed and when a new license application is submitted for the new business. So we would use the business license as the... When business is closing and when a new one is moving in.
So if I'm my new tenant, I know I'm coming up on a deadline, I just got my business license even though I'm not ready to do business for a year. I want to keep the same use.
Yeah, we look at, you know, based on the business license application.
So the business license application, even if they don't physically take possession of the premises, they may be in the middle of negotiating additional work or planning to do remodeling or more specific to their special needs?
That's my understanding. And legal may want to correct me on that, but that's my understanding, is it's based on when the application's made. I'm getting the hang of it.
Mr. Powell, is that okay if we have our attorney respond to that?
Yes, sir, that is fine. Although Mr. Pastrick's indicated that he just nodded his head up and down. That is correct. If you want to call the city attorney out for further clarification, that would be fine, absolutely.
So the nodding of the head was up and down, not back and forth?
Yes.
I didn't see, so... I guess the question on that becomes where you have people who are landlords, you know, who ran out to businesses. What is the average time that a property may be vacant? Because that would... Could suddenly change the value of that property if they are not able to get someone in in that specific length of time. And I don't know what the turnover rates are for these types of businesses or those within the Hunter Town Center. But has that been a problem in the past? I know that there's one on 3500 South that the year lapsed, and they can't get anyone into it because it's an automotive service establishment, and they're having a very difficult time now renting it or getting anyone to take the space unless someone just wants to come and buy the property and pretty well tear the building down. So what are we looking at there? You know, that seems to be a limitation. What is the magic about one year, I guess? Maybe that's why the state is...
And that just has to do with the laws that relates to non-conforming uses. That's the... The year timeframe is based on non-conforming use law, but the...
Which law? City ordinance or state law or...?
Certainly city, and I believe also state law as well.
State law actually defines that.
State law defines most, not all, but most of the guidelines that determine what our land use practices are in the city because this is such an important topic with interests that are all the way around to all...
So that particular part is in state law?
I don't think either. Do you know? Do you know, Nicole?
All of those land use regulations are found in 109A of the code. I don't have the exact site, but I can...
Title 10 of the city code?
Title 10 of the state law.
Okay, state law.
Because state code 109A.
Well, I actually don't need the reference. I'm not going to look it up.
The other comment I was going to make to you, Mayor, is now as you're delving into, this is not a discussion about the legal precedents and why ordinances are created where they are, but about the project itself. So certainly the question about, you know, is the year limitation, you know, that needs to be known, that certainly is germane to the project?
That is exactly what I'm asking. And I have someone who brought that issue up to me. And that may determine how I vote on this as well.
Absolutely, but the why is as to why it's a year or not or not. That's all I'm pointing.
Yeah, so if it's arbitrary, then, you know, I'd say, well, let's wait two years then. So... But if it's state law, then I can't do that. Right?
If it's state law or city ordinance as it exists, you can't do that. That's correct.
No, but city ordinance, I can recommend that we change that.
You can't do anything about it tonight, but yeah, you can make an ordinance change.
Okay.
Recommendation.
But see, if...
By that bearing on the...
That one has possibilities, but if it's state law, it's not like next month.
By the same logic, Mayor, yes, you could have effect on that too by going up and lobbying the legislature.
Okay.
And I'd like to point out, just because it's state law, that is not excluded from being arbitrary or changeable. Because that's the other piece that we know. Again, going back to the land use discussion, that's a highly contested and examined section of state law because of the importance of the subject of property rights generally to everybody.
Well, this whole issue of, you know, grandfathering in, you know, an existing property owner... property owner is interesting to me because, you know, you say, well, we don't want to harm those who are there, who are going to process their business in a normal way. In other words, we have a lot of fast food restaurants there in that Hunter Town Zone. So what happens if one closes down? A lot of others may not come in. But that building really, you know, it doesn't work for an apparel store very well, you know, based on the design. So does that effectively mean that they almost have to tear their building down, that it loses all its value? I'm just trying to understand that, because, you know, I certainly want to see improvements in our city, but I want to understand the cost that it comes with.
If I may clarify, so I looked up state code, it is one year in state code?
It is one year in state code.
Yes.
That certainly is a steeper hill to climb, I think, than here, but you know. Certainly, it's a longer hill. Any other comments from the council? Anything else that you feel ought to be shared or presented on this, that you think the public might be interested in? Anything else, Mr. Pastrick?
I'm happy to answer any more questions.
Mr. Pastrick, I believe you'll be available here, so that if there is someone who comes up during the comment period, you'd be available to assist us in clarifying those questions.
Yes, sir.
With that then, what we will do, I think, if I miss any of these, why, council, please remind me, we will now accept public input regarding application GP1 2017, the general plan change for the Hunter Town Center. So this is in that area, as has been outlined. And following that public comment period, the council will then address ordinance 17-18 to adopt that Hunter Town Center. Is there anyone here to speak to this application GP1-2017? Please come forward. Please introduce yourself. This is general comment for everyone when you come up. We generally ask for contact information. If you don't want to have that on a public record, you can give that to our city recorder in case we need to get back with you to clarify anything. If you're, you're welcome to do it here or not.
Yeah, my name's Kelly Bertosch, 5954, West Vine Circle. I'm a frequent flyer coming here, so you got me known. Anyhow, as we kind of looked at this map, you've got to remember back in December, when somebody applied for a car lot near that area. And we talked about how congested 56th and 35th is. I hope you really take a good look at how this is being put in there, and how this is going to affect by either adding more commercial building around there, how much more traffic flow is going to be in and out of there, and crossing 35th South, especially in some of those vacant areas right now, if they build commercially. Traffic's going to be horrendous. Our traffic out there is really bad anyway. And that's why they kind of said no against that car lot, which was just a little bit east of that lot. But still, most people know that, that's Ruski's old lot that you're looking at, that big piece, I'm sure, on the map. But I just hope you guys put something decent, or allow the people to do what they want and choose to, the owners. We've got a lot of stuff go out that area anyway. We don't want the city overrun and stuff. We, yeah, we just need a nice little clean community. Let's keep it clean out there, and keep it nice. Just make it work for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else to speak to this application?
See, I want to just ask a question.
Certainly. Please come forward to the microphone. Because we are required by state law to have everything recorded.
Thank you. Yeah. My name's Kevin Anderson. I just have a question at this time, and that is, I really am here to speak about the zone change as it affects a particular portion of the property. I represent Kmart, and they're located in the northwest quadrant of this HTC Zone. I don't want to stand up three separate times and address similar issues unless you want me to. My preference would be to stand once and address the topics generally, but I'm happy to handle it however you'd like. It may be more efficient if we had public comment on all issues first. I don't know if that's appropriate. I leave that to the city? No?
No.
Will you be voting after each item, or will you be voting on all of them at the end?
Yes, we will be voting. When we finish with the public comment here, we'll close public comment, come back to the council for action on that issue. We will, once that vote has been taken, whatever action the council decides, then we will go to the next item for a separate public comment period, and then subsequent to that, action on that piece. So although it may be a little redundant, it is permissible for you to speak on all three of them, as it is to anyone else.
Maybe what I will do, in the interest of time, is to address things generally, and then as we come to other items, I'll either say ditto, or if there are particular issues that would be helpful for me to address, I'm happy to do that. I want to be as efficient as I can, because I know you have a burden, heavy burden tonight and limited schedule. If I may take a few minutes then?
You can take a minute.
I'll be happy to proceed. So again, my name is Kevin Anderson. I'm appearing tonight for Kmart, which is a major property owner in the northwest quadrant of this property. Before I begin, I first want to just commend you and thank you all for that wonderful free concert tonight. I've heard a lot of great patriotic music this summer, and I have to say, that's the most touching patriotic music I've heard from those wonderful young aspiring musicians. So thank you for that. With respect to the HTC issue, to review first just a little bit of history. And the history is this, as, as the planning staff mentioned, the HTC Zone affects primarily the intersection of 3500 South and 5600 West. The northwest quadrant of that, where the Kmart property is located, is one of the larger parcels of property in the entire HTC Zone. It's a retail property, and it's been used as a retail property for thirty-some-odd years. That northwest quadrant is located at one of the prime intersections in the entire West Valley City, perhaps second only to Constitution Boulevard and 3500 South. It has the most traffic, it has the most retail infrastructure that I'm aware of within the city limits, and it has been used that way for decades now. The property also is the closest property to the new Mountain View Corridor, which I'll refer to perhaps as the West Valley Highway. It is just, it's virtually adjacent to the entrance and the exit from the Mountain View Corridor when that's completed, which adds additional value and additional impetus for not just the Kmart property, but all of the properties in that northwest quadrant as retail-oriented properties, as they have developed, and as they have been used for decades. The concern that Kmart and other property owners in that quadrant have is that the proposed general plan, and then the zoning ordinance, which is before the council tonight, would change the zoning of that property from C2, as it has existed for these last several decades, to HTC-CO. And the CO, as I understand it, stands for Commercial Office. The idea behind the zoning, as I understand it, is that it is intended to reduce, or restrict, or straightjacket retail uses in that area, and particularly as time goes forward, some would be impacted immediately, as council members have already noted, and as your honors have already noted. And initially, as I understand it, the idea was that this site, the northwest quadrant, was a site that planning staff and others had sort of recommended as being a place for an educational concentration, concentration of educational businesses, maybe a college campus, satellite campus, and other related businesses or educational functions. But the downside of that, the impact of that to these properties that have been built up and have been used for these many years as retail, and even in the context of improving retail conditions with the coming of the West Valley Highway or the Mountain View Corridor, that make this property even more valuable, and more important, more significant from a retail standpoint, being the first area that's located next to that highway. But the proposed zoning would essentially strip this property, this quadrant, from many of the retail uses. Not all of them, but from many of the retail uses that justified the multimillion-dollar investment and use of these properties over, over time. I want to add quickly, this is a great city, it's well-run, the government's wonderful. Those who live here are lucky to have this council, and the elected officials, and the planning staff, and other staff members. Planning staff has been wonderful to work with on this, they've been very professional, but we have a disagreement with them. And the disagreement comes down to whether this property should be restricted from the broad range of C2 retail uses that have been permitted for decades. And this is not just a theoretical discussion. It causes immediate injury and damages to Kmart, and perhaps to others. And let me address that for just a minute. First of all, though, Mr. Mayor, you asked a question earlier about state law and the one-year statute dealing with abandonment of uses. And just a clarification, I don't have the statute in front of me, but my recollection of the statute, and I read it just earlier today, is that state law mandates one year as a minimum. It doesn't mandate one year as the maximum. So cities can adopt an ordinance, say, that could not be less than one year in terms of defining abandonment, but they could be longer than one year in length. I just offer that as a suggestion. It's not counsel to this council. You have superb legal counsel that will advise you on that. Since you asked the question, that's my understanding. Now, with respect to the damages and the impact, just to give a practical application to the impetus of this issue. Kmart, as this council knows, is in the process of trying to sell its property. It's been trying to sell it for several months now. For the past several months, it, well, when it first put its property on the market, towards the first of the year, perhaps just barely before that, there were a flood of offers that it received for the purchase of this property at a high price, based on the historic C2 usage of this intersection, that was the foundation of the investment, the multimillion-dollar investment in this property and the upkeep over the years. And again, I think this is the same for many of the properties in that, in that same northwest quadrant. Of that flood of offers, there were, I think, seven offers initially. Kmart accepted one, and it had six backup offers. The one that it accepted entered into a contract with Kmart to purchase the property. The contract was subject to due diligence and various other things. As this ordinance was proposed, obviously that caused the purchaser under contract significant concern as to what that does to the value and flexibility and usage of the property they were buying. And I'm sad to report that just in the last few weeks, that offer, within the due diligence period, so it was perfectly legal what they did, but after several months of being under contract, they terminated the contract. And in part, the termination was based on these additional restrictions that are being imposed by the HTC ordinance, if it's adopted. Now, an amendment, or a footnote to that, after that offer was rejected, the other six backup offers also passed on the opportunity because of, in part, the zoning issues with the HTC Zone. After that, another offer was made. Just in the last, well, I shouldn't say that. An offer wasn't formally made, but another broker came forward, indicated that he had a very interested buyer. The buyer wasn't willing to pay the same value as the earlier group were willing to pay, but was willing to close sooner, so it would be what they call in the business, a fast close. But I received a call yesterday morning from the broker of this new potential party, who told me that he had heard of this hearing and the issues relating to it, and the rezoning coming up for a vote. And I sent him a copy of the ordinance. He reviewed the ordinance. He called me back this morning and said his, his client was terminating its interest in the property because of the prospect of the HTC ordinance being adopted. The practical, actual, real impact of that is millions of dollars in loss, not just to Kmart, but to the other property owners in this northwest quadrant. And the question then is, and my suggestion to the council, I think at least with respect to that northwest quadrant, the zone change is premature and unnecessary at this time. My recommendation to the council is that whatever you may do with respect to the master plan, change, that, and whatever you do with respect to the other areas in the HTC, I'm not familiar with those, I haven't focused on those, because I don't represent anyone in those areas. But with respect to the northwest quadrant, I think that the zone change at this time is unnecessary and premature, and causes enormous damage and injury. And this damage and injury, I think, because of the background facts that I've laid out and others, is arbitrary and capricious and improper and confiscatory. I think it well constitutes a taking of property rights by regulation without just compensation and violation of state statute. So there are lots of potential problems and concerns from a legal standpoint. But again, from the practical standpoint, I don't see any real benefit to the city in that quadrant of adopting that zoning at this point. If the general plan's adopted, fine, it provides guidance to the future. But the enactment of a change in zoning has an immediate impact on property values. And that is amplified, again, in the context of the history. For the thirty-some-odd years that Kmart has operated this property as a retail property, and has offered goods and services for the citizens of this community, and has paid thousands and thousands of dollars in sales and property taxes, that was all done, it was assessed for property taxes based on a C2 zoning. And now when it's come time to sell the property, there's a move to suddenly change the zoning, which dramatically impacts property values, dropping them through the floor. And so it's paid high property taxes based on C2 zoning, which was fair, because they used the C2 zoning. But to change that now, I think unnecessarily, is just, again, premature and ill-advised. One additional comment. Until the West Valley Highway or the Mountain View Corridor is completed, and we understand what the impact really... what the impact really is from the exit and the entrance on 3500 South, I think it's, again, ill-advised to adopt zoning ordinances based on future events until we see them, until we know what the impacts are, until we've seen how that West Valley Corridor affects things. Because when that happens, there may be a different zoning, or there may be other issues that need to be dealt with in the zoning. And so rather than trying to anticipate those in advance, I think it makes more sense, it certainly is more prudent, and I think it's generally more consistent with the way this city has operated, to wait until the necessity arises, until the facts are known, until the impacts are present, and then decide what the zoning should be. And I'm talking specifically now about the zoning as opposed to the general plan. If the general plan's enacted, that gives general guidance, but at the very least, I wouldn't change the zoning until you know and the community knows what the impacts are. And if you do adopt the zoning now, it just has such a dramatic impact. It's not theoretical, it's actual impact that, that is occurring right now and will be amplified based on the vote of this council tonight. So thank you for your time. I will offer into the record, because of the time limitations suggested of five minutes, a position statement that I put together that outlines these and other issues and presents proffered evidence with respect to them. And so I'll now offer that to the record.
But just as a clarification, the five-minute rule applied to the other public comment period, not to this one.
Okay.
Just so everyone's aware.
Okay. Well, I'll offer this into the record.
Unless the council takes some motion to do differently.
Thank you. I'll offer this into the record, and then as necessary, I'm happy to.
Yes, it looks like it's a question. But why don't you let him just have that over? Why don't we get that over?
Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Young.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
You came here tonight and tried to explain to us about the C2 and also HTC Zero and that awareness and this awareness for both sides. You are part of a very interesting subject matter, and I would love to ask, you know, I would love to ask Mr. Steve Patrick a few questions about this Hunter Town Center. But thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. And one last thing that I just thought of that I didn't mention before, and that is with respect to this educational component, perhaps the desire over time to see more educational areas relocate or educational institutions locate this property. The potential purchaser, the person who was under contract on the Kmart property, reported to me, the broker, that they contacted the Target College that had been discussed as a potential user of this new zone. And they offered that potential education institution, I'm told by the broker, over a million dollars in incentives and concessions to encourage them to come to the property now in connection with the redevelopment that they were trying to put together, and that they were advised that the institution was unwilling to make that move, it wasn't interested. Now, again, that's just a snapshot in time, things may change over time. I'm also advised that Mr. Alex Winder has a meeting in the very near future with a college to talk to them further about the possibility of relocating here. But based on the information that we've received, it appears, again, that it's premature and it's best, at least with respect to the zoning change that affects the Northwest Quadrant, our suggestion, and I think I speak for many of the property owners, I've been contacted by several in the last few days indicating they feel the same way, leaving the property for now as C2, as it's been zoned for decades, and as the property immediately, north of it is zoned, and the properties along 3500 South are zoned, and properties along 5600 West are zoned, leaving it in that same C2 zoning until we see what happens with respect to the Mountain View Corridor and the impacts that creates, and then revisiting the issue. Thank you very much for your time. Did you have another question, Councilman Young?
No, for the Mr. Steve Patrick.
Mr. Pastor.
Yeah. Here, you brought this Hunter Town Center to us a few months ago, not long ago, and now we're coming back. Just my question here, Mr. Anderson, he brought it up, a very good point, a very interesting point. So my argument was very much the same, Mr. Anderson, I made last time when we had this one a few months ago. Why can't we wait for the Mountain View Corridor done on 3500 South, 5600 West, and we see the impact of that traffic in that area, and we can make the decision, we change or we're not to change for the Hunter Town Center? Why so urgent right now? I know you made that argument in our study meeting, but I want you to do that tonight to the people here to hear this. Why are you doing that?
Sure, I'd love to. So certainly the council could decide to wait until after the Mountain View Corridor is completed, that's certainly an option. The reason why the staff were bringing this forward to the council now is because you do have a property that is vacant in the area, and so if, if the council would like to see something different than what's allowed under the current zoning, then if you delayed that, someone could bring in an application under the current zoning and build something under that current zoning, which as a council, if you're, if you're happy with the C2 zoning, then, then, you know, of course, moving on this Hunter Town Center would not be as critical. Another reason, as Mr. Anderson brought up, is that with Kmart being vacant right now and we're looking for tenants, the tenants that would be, you know, available for, for that site, if we keep it under the C2 zone, would be, again, based on what's under the C2 zoning right now versus the HTC zone. So it really comes down to if, if as a council, you're comfortable with what's in the C2 zoning in terms of developing the vacant property, the little vacant property that exists in the area, as well as any turnover in, or just filling in vacant spots right now, what, what set of rules do you want to have in play with any changes that would happen?
Thank you. I would like to perhaps ask a question as well. There was a comment about this college, potential college receiving incentives to come here, is that a part of our discussion? I really hadn't heard that before.
It weren't, weren't city incentives, it was more of the property owner offering incentives, but not the city.
Oh, the property owner offering, okay. Yeah, because I thought, maybe I missed something along the way, and I have before. Then, would you speak? Contrary to what was stated here earlier, of course, this council, I think, cannot legally, legally, so I hope he's listening, make any decisions based upon its financial impact or economic impact on an individual. That is against state law for any public official. Even though it may have significant financial impact to a property owner, we can determine the impact to, like, the city, if I'm correct. For example, whether we decide to put an office building, or a retail store, or an agricultural area, we can say, how does that impact the city? With that statement, if we're headed towards a, an office building scenario versus a retail, is there a significant difference to the city on revenues between those two? Is that an appropriate question to ask?
Mayor, maybe I can actually answer that question just from a motivation standpoint in the first place. As you know, sales tax is a huge part of the revenues coming into the city.
Yeah.
We have no desire or motivation to change the zoning of any particular piece of property that is bringing good tax revenue to the cities when that is working from a business standpoint, it benefits the city, it benefits the residents, keeps everybody overall's tax burden down. That's clearly not the case here. Kmart, Sears, and Kmart before that have been there for decades and have been a great corporate partner to the city and have performed economically very well over those time periods. But that history has changed. That's evidenced by the, the, the business switches, the closures, and the current status that we have right now where the Kmart property is vacant. The only point I make, point I'm making in that is, it would certainly be not in our interest as a city, and we wouldn't even be proposing concepts like this if what currently was operating over there was working and was operating. We're not doing, we don't bring you planning proposals and changes in direction of the general plan or zoning of any, just on a whim, or, which I know, I know you know that, and I'm being a little dramatic here, but the point I'm dramatizing is the fact that what we're trying to do here is put together a forward and future-looking proposal and zoning plan that will enable economic development there. So no, we're not economically disadvantaged by, by proposing this and you potentially approving it, which, as Mr. Pastor pointed out, you don't have to do that, you can do that, it depends on what you, from a policymaker's standpoint, see as the best interest of the city going forward. You also were well spoken and pointed out to the fact that that is what your interest is, your interest is what's the, the best benefit and best use of the land for the future of the city, right?
That's correct. Whether it be economic, whether it be aesthetic, whatever it is, green space, all of those.
And at this juncture, at this point, at this request and at this time, from an authority standpoint, and again, we had some discussion about state and local ordinance previous, this is where you, as the local elected body, has ultimate authority. You can zone or, and change the zone, or not change the zone of this property and this parcel and this plan, as you see fit in those interests.
Okay. Thank you for your response, Mr. Pastor. Any other?
But my question, thank you, Mayor, but my question, how far, you know, by chance, you know anything about Mountain View Corridor? How far they can reach to 5600 West and 3500 South? I know they are right now on 4100 South to 5600 West.
So as far as timing is concerned, the, what UDOT is telling us is that the, the section between 4100 South and SR201.
Right.
Would begin in 2019 and complete, be completed in 2021, in terms of the construction timetable.
For 4100 South?
Right, so from north of 4100 South to SR201 would be between 2019 and 2021.
The new section, that's the new section they haven't started?
That's right.
Well, I mean, they've tore down houses and gone right away.
No, yeah, no, no road construction there.
No road construction. That contract has not been, and won't be until 2019. Any other questions, Mr. Lehman? Okay, then, anyone else to speak on this? Thank you, Mr. Lehman, or Pastor. Got the wrong Steve, sorry.
I am Sally from West Valley. I've lived here 44 years in my house, which is just outside the picture of what you're looking at right there. I'll be 150 feet from the elevated Mountain View Corridor. They took out 112 homes at least, five years ago with the last dozen in the last three years. So what Mr. Anderson gave to us, my neighbors and I feel that the zoning change being held off might be very much what everyone would appreciate. As you know, Mountain View is supposed to be four, double lanes going, with the on and off on the outside and the straight through in the middle. This is what they've done in Tucson, this is what they have done a little bit on Bangor or on 78th, and that is their picture of what will be happening. At least that's what UDOT gave us as a neighborhood, when they took all of our neighbors. Okay? They gave us the wonderful plaque, I have it, if you needed it, I can bring the copy in, because I kept it, because so many were going to be gone. You will do what you will do. Thank you for listening to us for our input, but the suggestion Mr. Anderson made and the reasons very much parallel what we feel as neighbors, as it will impact us. We understand that the extended bus will, with the widening of 3500, we've always been the orphan child. They were told on 56, my neighbors of, yeah, I moved in '72, but they lived there all their lives, that the road was going to be widened all of this time. They didn't put in carpets, they didn't do roofs, they didn't do improvements. And then, of course, it never got done, even for the Olympics. The one part that was not widened on 56 was 3500 to 41. So we always understand we're kind of the orphan child and left there. The power lines have been lifted, and more neighbors have funny little illnesses like Bell's palsy on either side, and other things that impact us. We also realize as a neighborhood that Southwest Quadrant that is left, that eventually two major highways, 56 and the Mountain View Corridor, eventually 30 years down the road becomes all commercial, and the residents are all gone. This is a fact of life, back east, LA, everywhere. So we understand that we're, you know, a disappearing species there in our neighborhood. What we want in the zoning is careful, thoughtful, not too soon. I also did an earthquake preparedness fair, and I hope your hydrologist told you where the high liquefaction part on the map you can get from the county goes right diagonally across where the Dairy Queen used to be, and the building is now falling apart, the top is blowing away, and across kitty corner behind the 7-Eleven where the blockbuster, everywhere there. So, no, we haven't had a lot of water, but the earth will move, and the liquefaction is the Jell-O effect. So I am hoping that this rezoning isn't going to have five stories or higher there. I mean, I hope your hydrologist has your ear as far as the danger putting up. And earthquakes, which we're due for, go with the harmonics of how many are up and down. All right? Three stories can be taken out with a certain depth and a distance, and five stories are left. Five stories will go down, but the three stories won't be damaged. So please have all of these factors in there. I am sure your, your council that helps to advise you, their specialties are there. We, we would, we understand the properties that are open. We have open fields, Brushy's Greenhouse used to be there, there's big open fields there behind the tire where they stop for the buses and the Conoco, so that property we don't mind, because it's open and it doesn't have anything on it. We were sad to see Kmart Sears Kmart leave. It was very nice, but it's how sales go, a lot of them are losing. But we just, 56 is not wide enough, or not enough turn lanes onto 35th, 35th isn't wide enough. We can't. But we just, 56 is not wide enough, or not enough turn lanes onto 35th. 35th isn't wide enough. We can't have a school. We can't have, or excuse me, a college. We, we can't have businesses come in there that are going to have however many. Now, with the businesses that are there, it's a come and go. All right? It's not a consistent five days a week coming and going there. 56 does that. Plenty from the people south of us. So please consider waiting on the zoning for the whole parcel. I don't know how it works that way. I just found out about it from my neighbor at 5:00. So, yes, I know you guys do this on Tuesday nights, every other Tuesday, or the second, fourth. Understand that. Taught that in the Boy Scouts when to go. Please know that we were not technically informed, and as the Neighborhood Watch Chairman years ago, we, I was. But as a neighborhood in that southwest quadrant, I did not know about this. So, and I checked with other neighbors too, that they didn't find a notice in the mail. And no, not all of us old people go to our computer every single day and read it, and none of us have this thing going where we don't pay attention and have eye contact with you. I won't have it. I know, I'm 70 years old. But still, I want to have face-to-face. I want to see the faces of the people that were elected and that are in charge of our future. And I know a lot of people here are feeling the same way. And so, please take that in consideration, that we haven't had as much public input, because we didn't know. So, that's kind of my last one. Thank you, gentlemen.
Could I ask you a question? You said you were a homeowner?
Yes, sir.
And?
Forty-four years.
Okay. And what is, do you feel is the impact or the benefit of postponing that, other than just to have more discussion? I mean, how does this impact you? I have in my mind already?
I'm out of the, I'm out of the zoned impact, and I noticed that there weren't any residential that were being affected by what this zoning does. Sometimes you have a feel for your neighborhood. It feels good. When they ripped out the heart of my neighborhood, 112 homes at least, I feel kind of missing. Sometimes wondering with the highway, are they going to come and take my next-door neighbor? Would they want a foot of my property? Because they didn't plan for wide enough taking of the property with those power lines up there, where they go zzzzz in and out in the south end of the valley? You know? And how much are they going to wig and wag all over, all the way through West Valley? Who, of course, gets done last? You know? Been here when it was Hunter and Grager and Chesterfield. Understand, we're always put at the tail end, especially with Kennesaw wanted, they break, fix it first. So it's, we know the drill, we know the history. We've been here. Like I say, 56 did not get done for the Olympics. So we're always the orphaned child. We feel sometimes our voice is not heard. I understand that state property and that they listen to us better than they listen to you, as far as the complaints of the field, of the homeless. Finally, again, got the homeless guy out of the last house. Thank you. You know, and the police are going, what can we do? And I've called property owners like the one on the corner of 27th, across from the Maverick there with the Wind Cove section air. And I called them and I said, how do you expect to sell this piece of property? Well, I don't, it's up to the city. No, it isn't. You can't sell your property because there's homeless people in the little diptydo hiding in all the brush. Cut the things down. There's dead trees all over, but I know there's water running down, because there's trees live along the backside of my gone neighbor's yards. So I know there's water helping keep those trees alive, but it hides homeless people. And that state, and we do complain, we did, it was supposed to be Tuesday and then it was Thursday, and now it's Tuesday again, and they're still not taking the last house down. So we do, we call the state. We know your jurisdiction happens to be 35th. Right? No, it's a state, I mean. No, sorry. Anyway, we remember the EIS statements went from, you know, went from county to state to you guys, back to county to state. I mean, there were three of them at $2 million apiece. We thought that was just, you know, we're going like this. So anyway, that's it. Sally from West Valley. I'm Sally Stevens, 5747 West, 3705 South, 84128.
Thank you very much.
And I talked too long, thank you.
Next?
Alex Winter, 1169 West Cordine Drive. I guess I just want to make sure, we're just talking about adopt, or updating the Hunter Town Center Plan right now, right? Anything with the zoning?
That's correct.
First item is just the, the plan?
The general plan.
General plan, okay. Well, I just wanted to say?
You're talking about right now?
Right now, this item.
Right, yes.
Yes, this item.
The second item will be the actual rezone that we're going to talk about.
The zoning we will address as a subsequent item tonight.
I just want to make sure that was clear, because it seems like everyone's talking about zoning. So, I guess with the Hunter Town Center Plan, I know Steve and Nicole have worked hard on it, and I appreciate their forward thinking, and I'll talk about the zoning later, so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no further public comments, we will close the public comment period on application GP-12017. We will come back to the council to consider ordinance 17-18 to adopt the Hunter Town Center Plan. To the council.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment generally about this ordinance and also the upcoming ordinances of the remainder.
Yes, from Norton?
Just want everybody who's concerned about this to know that the council has been aware of this and working on it from time to time, not every meeting, but since at least October last year, that's 10 months, staff has been working on it much more regularly and for a much longer period of time. And something that's just come up and we're going to consider it in the may votes today. Just want that to be clear. There's not any kind of haphazard rezone or change to the general plan. We would, in fact, consider things and send them back to staff to make some changes and try again, and this has been a long process, as it should be. Nothing this important should come easily or be the idea of one person or anything like that.
Yes, Councilman?
Thank you for those of you who have come and have spoken to us. We really do appreciate you sharing your thoughts with us. This is a very important intersection, and, and the potential for what this intersection can become is really great and can be a great benefit to our, to our residents if it's done correctly. And I also want to tell the staff that I really appreciate the work that they've done, that they've studied this and, and presented it to us. And I think they have a good plan. I think that this, that this area could be great and be a great benefit to our residents. And we need to plan right now before the properties are sold and, and new plans are made. So I'd like to make a motion that we, that we accept this ordinance 17-18 and adopt the Hunter Town Center Plan.
Second? Motion is properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we will go to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Beeler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northell?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we go to application ZT-2-2017. We will now accept public input regarding this application. Is there anyone here to speak to this issue? This part of the application?
Mayor, if I may, this is to create the new Hunter Town Center Zone. Oh, this is not the rezone, but the creation of the new zone.
Oh, excuse me?
Yes.
Okay. This is the rezone?
No.
No? No? Wait a minute.
Let me just read the, the first line from the issue paper, Mayor. A zone text change to create the Hunter Town Center Zone and to make other technical changes to Title VII.
Okay.
So, because we don't have an HT zone right now, this actually creates that zone.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification. Anyone here to speak to this part of the application? Seeing no public input? We will close the public input portion. It's now closed. We'll bring it back to the council. To the council for consideration of ordinance 17-29.
Mayor, I move for approval of ordinance 17-29.
Second? Properly before us. Any further discussion? Okay, then, to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Northell?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Mayor.
Councilman Beeler?
Aye.
Mayor Bigelow?
No.
Motion fails.
Mayor, point of order, considering that there is no HTC zone, do we need to have a public hearing on the rezone to the HTC zone and?
Because it's, because it is, and has been advertised and posted, and it is, then yes, we still need to have the public hearing, even if there's no comment, just for the form of it.
Might be a lot of comment, we'll see.
Very, well, might be, yes.
Okay. Then next, we go to application Z-6-2017. That is the issue now before us. We will accept public input regarding this issue. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this?
Alex Winter, 1169 West Cordine Drive, South Door, Utah 84095. I guess the one comment that I got from Steve historic was, basically wanted to change the zone now so that the vacant land can't post up that's in the C2 zone. And we bought our property, hell, I think we closed in October, and I came into the city, well, before we bought it, we came, did our due diligence, and we were told what we wanted to put in, we could put in, and then we closed on the property and came to the city and found out that there was a moratorium and that we couldn't do anything, and we're still not able to do anything. But I guess I just, I'd like to see it stay as C2, just so that I can have options. We may not do anything now, we might wait till the corridor comes through and see what happens, but we just, we want our options and we definitely want our, keep our full bundle rights that came with our property when we bought it, so, thanks.
Thank you. Next?
Kevin Anderson, appearing again on behalf of Kmart. I will incorporate by reference the prior comments that I made, so that those comments under the, in the other public hearing are incorporated into this public hearing, and also will incorporate as part of this public hearing, the position paper and proffer that I submitted earlier. And just a couple of additional comments, and I'll be brief because of the procedural state, status of where things are at this point. But there, there's a question that has been raised, and I think it's a legitimate question, and I think the city has legitimate opportunities or responsibilities to consider redevelopment of properties. My comment, though, as it relates to the HTC zone and to the northwest quadrant in particular is this. If, if what the city is after is redevelopment, based in my experience, and I think based on most empirical evidence, redevelopment comes about more quickly when broader options are permitted and there's more development opportunity and incentive. Comes about more quickly when that is the case, rather than when development opportunities are ratcheted down and limited and narrowed and become significantly more expensive. And so if the city wants to see redevelopment of this area, I think that comes about more quickly under a C2 zone approach until we see what happens with the, with the highway. Couple of other quick comments. In terms of the market data and the actual market information and use, what the market is telling us, at least what is telling Kmart from the offers that we've received and the lack of interest with the proposed zoning change, is that the market at least still perceives this property, this major intersection, as a prime retail intersection as opposed to a secondary intersection for other non-retail uses. Finally, the proposed zone change, I think, has the impact of singling out for disparate treatment the retail properties that are located in the HTC zone and in particular in the northwest quadrant of that zone. And it puts the city, I think, in the uncomfortable position of picking winners and losers instead of letting the marketplace and actual market forces determine what, what the best areas are for retail versus some other use. And thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. You step forward.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Joanne Pogue. My address is 4930 West Laredo Circle, West Valley City, 84120. I do not live close by. I'm going to try to make this short. I'm, really, my comments are based on what I've heard tonight, Mr. Anderson in particular, Mayor, your comment that we can't make a decision based on how it's going to impact a business, but rather how it's going to impact our city. It seems to me that Mr. Anderson pointed out that seven businesses opted out of purchasing Kmart. Clearly that hurts Kmart. Assuming these were going to be retail establishments, the city is losing out on the sales tax revenue of whatever business that was going to purchase that building. So there is a cost to that. I would presume that they're also losing property tax revenue for the, based on the value of the building. So I think by eliminating the commercial, the C2, and the fears of the potential buyers, I think that has hurt the city as well as hurting Kmart. My question is, I'm not a city planner, I am a compliance officer at a bank, so this may sound like a stupid question. Does it have to be either or? Does it have to be either C2 or commercial office? Can it not be mixed use? Is that something that we can consider? Rhetorical question. And I would like to suggest that And I would like to suggest that this be voted on, or postponed, to be voted on in a future meeting to provide for some of the discussions and consideration of the comments that some of the people have made. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak to this?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is my husband, James. I'm Pauline Thatcher, and we live in Hunter Park Circle, which abuts right against the zone of 56, 35, and that south. It's already commercial, okay? But it was, I was here before this body, once before, when they changed that section to commercial, before it was agricultural. And I opposed it then, not that it not be zoned commercial, but that it be restricted to not have any buildings more than one story, because on both the west side and the south side is our neighborhood houses. And I didn't want a building looking down into my backyard, and I didn't want my view of the world totally obliterated by a building. And they were gracious enough to understand what I was saying, and they did not, they zoned it so that it would not be that I would have to deal with multi-story building. I don't know what the plans are for that corner. All I want is a non-multi-story building built there. So, I'm asking that you not turn it to a C2 general commercial, but you maintain it as-is. That's my request.
Okay, that concludes your remarks.
My head is at 56, 66 West, 3545 South.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak? Seeing no one further to speak, we will bring it back to the council. We'll close the public hearing portion. By the way, just for your information before anyone leaves, you note that on the last item that we voted on, the vote was three to two. Two council members are absent. If they were here, could that have changed the vote? Possibly so. So, this does not prevent this item from coming up in the future, so please stay tuned.
Thank you.
Okay. Then, to the council.
I don't believe we can change the zoning, so I would move for denial of ordinance 17-30.
Any further discussion?
I'm wondering, Mayor, if as part of that motion, we could ask staff to keep working on this and possibly bring it back at a future date with some of the recommendations that we've heard tonight.
I think it could always be brought up in study meetings.
Yeah, there, there's nothing to limit that at any point to bring that up. In fact, certainly ought to be a study item discussion maybe. But I believe that for this to come back to the council, there are certain notification requirements, so it's not likely-
Go through Planning Commission again, I'm sure.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Buehler.
Aye.
Councilman Hume.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Northfeld.
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion for denial passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. Then, I think we're next on our resolutions, if I'm keeping track here. We, and it's okay if some of you need to leave, we're going to go on to the next items on our agenda. This is in agreement with a company, Trevitri, to conduct an IT readiness and capability benchmark assessment for our IT division of our administration department. This is a $44,000 contract. It will help us assess where we are, what our needs are for the future. There have been some changes in the department as far as staffing. This will be an appropriate time to take a look at what might be needed in that department. And it's a three to five-year strategic plan. We believe it's appropriate to do, that $44,000 will come from our existing budget based upon current staff vacancies, is the way I think we put it. That is the issue. We will now present that to the council for their comments or action.
And we can't have a public hearing on it even if we want to, right? So, without a move for approval of resolution 17-135.
Second. Stereo. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Northfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hume.
Aye.
Councilman Buehler.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we go to item 10, new business on our agenda. We have three items there. We'll begin with application S-8-2017 filed by Nate Jones. This is final plat approval for the Hollow Creek subdivision located at 3315 South, 6400 The zoning is for R17, was reviewed and approved in 2007. They didn't get it recorded, but now it looks like they're going to three lots on 1.2 acres. That is the issue before us. If you want to add any additional comments or anything else, certainly make a motion to the council.
Move for approval of application S-8-2017.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Buehler.
Aye.
Councilman Hume.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Northfeld.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have application S-10-2017 filed by Bill King requesting final plat approval for the Granite Mountain Storage Subdivision located at 4550 South, 3280 West. It's located in a C2 zone, it's right between Home Depot and Bangor Highway, oh yes, remember this one, and a conditional use application for the storage unit project was reviewed and approved by Planning Commission in April 2017. One lot, 2.8 acres, they'll access it through an existing stubs street through residential area. The plat on the stubs street will have a cul-de-sac, and that will allow access and fire trucks to get in there. With that introduction then, to the council for any comments or action.
Mayor, I'd move for approval of application S-10-2017.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? This is the one, oh, no, go ahead.
I'd be happy to see something go into that location where it's just been kind of an eyesore along Bangor Highway, and certainly could be put to better use than the current
Yeah, the only question I think that came up during our discussion was the traffic through the neighborhood, since it doesn't have direct access through commercial properties. But hopefully that will be limited because of storage units. It's not a restaurant or anything.
Not a Kmart.
Okay, to our recorder for a vote.
Councilman Northfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hume.
Aye.
Councilman Buehler.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we have our application S-11-2017 filed by Carlos Hernandez. Final plat approval for Artisan Place, PUD, located 2163 South, Constitution Boulevard, located in an M-zone. And this was the one on the north end of 2700 South, wasn't it? Let's see, 2163 South, okay. I remember the location, but not a lot about it. It seems like that was a number of pieces of property, and they're going to build several buildings in there, and this will allow them to do it. 11 lots on 2.7 acres. Lot one is where they're currently at, but they're going to build some buildings in the back portion for Artisan, Marble, and Granite. That is the issue before us. To the council.
I, I move for approval of application S-11-2017.
Second. Properly before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Buehler.
Aye.
Councilman Hume.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Northfeld.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next on our agenda, we have our consent agenda, fairly routine items. There are three. Resolution 17-136, a public sidewalk and utility easement. 1931 West, 3500 South. Resolution 17-137, a warranted deed in public utility easement across portions of property at 24th South, excuse me, 5052 West, 2400 South. Resolution 17-138, a public sidewalk, lighting, and utility easement at 2880 South, 5600 West. I think I got all of those. Typically, we'll do those all together since they're fairly routine. To the council.
I move for approval of the three items of our consent agenda.
Second. Properly before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Northfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hume.
Aye.
Councilman Buehler.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
That completes our work for tonight. We need one more motion. Motion to the chair, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Passes unanimously, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight.